Hello, welcome everyone to the Hopkantown Council Workshop of January 27, 2021. I would like to open this workshop up with a moment of silence and a salute to the flag.
To the Republic. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. I'd like to, I'd like to start this meeting off with, with, with any comments that Mr. Squares may have. I know you submitted a clean version in a red line version. I appreciate you doing that. Kind of simplifies things and allows, allows everyone to, to follow better. Do you, do you have any comments or concerns or any at this moment, Mr. Squares?
Sure, I can, I can let you know, the draft I submitted up to the table of, table of permitted uses was an attempt just to capture what was discussed at the last meeting. After that, I tried to incorporate it in. You can see the, the provision for land development solar was struck and it just says, you know, the use code that we, that we named for the last meeting is going to be prohibited. And then the next section, there's an accessory use section that's been amended somewhat. Since there is, since there was a ground mounted solar contemplated at the last meeting, I did include that in the draft where it wasn't before. My first attempt was just to include it as, as an accessory use in the manufacturing zone. But, you know, that, that could definitely be a point of discussion and I, I, I know that some members may want to discuss that. And then beyond that, it kept the contaminated site solar and it just refocused a lot of the restrictions that were previously on the land development solar in the last draft and made it applicable to the contaminated site solar or the ground mounted accessory solar. And then the last point, there was discussion about the farm viability ordinance. The, the proposed amendment that was suggested the last time that's been taken out. So this draft you have in front of you from, that I submitted again, doesn't affect the farm viability ordinance. And so I guess the one comment I would have is that when we submitted this, you know, we, we weren't sure what the appetite of the council was and what their expectations would be. So, you know, a lot of this was drafted with the idea that there would be some principal use solar allowed in the manufacturing zone. But, you know, if, if it is the, if it's the pleasure of the council to, to do a broader prohibition even for the contaminated site solar. You know, I, I think that probably could be done with a, a smaller ordinance. So there, it does have the contaminated site in there. But if the council were to decide, you know what, we don't like the contaminated site solar, we wouldn't object to that. You know, we originally proposed that just so that we would, if there was some strong feeling about keeping solar in the ordinance, principally solar, that we could guide it to where we thought it was most appropriate. But, you know, if the, if the thought is just banning that use outright, then that's something that could be removed from the ordinance. Other than that, you know, I, I just respond to any of the comments you have.
Yes, so I, I'm going to start off with, with something along those lines. I would like to make a proposal, looking at this, to, to get us started here, looking at the land use table here, number 308 contaminated site solar energy system. I'm going to propose that we put ends all the way across that. And, and I'm going to justify that with the fact that none of us here, the council members, are subject experts on contaminated sites. I would like to propose also that we, as a council, and, you know, invite those type of, those type of experts in before we make any decisions. We can always come back and address this issue. I mean, this isn't a, you know, we're not closing the door on uncontaminated sites. But I think that we, as a council, to do our due diligence, really need to, to study it a little more. It, it's, it's not closing the door, it's just getting a better education on this. I would feel comfortable myself making a decision upon something that I had, you know, the, the backing of, of experts and such. So if any other counselors have any comments or concerns regarding that proposal, I'd, I'd like to hear them. And also, I, I would like to recommend, just, just to remind everybody, you know, whenever you're speaking, just state your name before, before you make any comments. Go ahead, Scott, if you'd like to.
Scott Billhurst. My concern is, and I pushed for a special use permit, RF80 for contaminated with S, because we do have experts, zoning board review, the planning board, and those people that deal with these type of issues. The fact of the matter is, I've lived in Hopkins in 67 years, all my life. And the fact of the matter is, we have former landfills, we used to call them dumps. We have places where there was auto repair gasoline stations that may or may not be contaminated or certain elements of contamination. You can't really make a general statement about it, but I think that the bigger question is, is what do you do with that property? I took a lot of flack for supporting a previous proposal that was a former junkyard. And I know you don't want to talk about any specific site in a quarry, but begs the question is, we have these type of sites throughout Hopkins and what are we going to do about them? What is the potential, whether it's solar or anything else? And I think we should at least be open minded to try to find a solution to those areas. Also, just as a reminder, you know, solar has been a hot item for the last few years. In the previous town council, we enacted, and two, two members of the present council around the last town council, we enacted a pretty restrictive solar ordinance as it was. And this came in and I agreed to sponsor it because I believe people should be able to put ideas before the town council. But I, I really think that we should make a statement that we have, we're concerned about the spread of solar, solar. But we're certainly concerned about where the future is, what we're going to do with contaminated sites. And that would seem to be one of the more practical solutions, maybe not the only solution. You also have the, the aspect of how you tax those properties if they can't be used for certain things. Should people that own those properties be taxed the same as other properties? If it's actually ruled contaminated? And you also have the question, also, even to what extent we should allow people to have solar who have a challenge financially, whether that be farmers or other people. And I'm not saying, because I voted, my votes in the last council show that I'm decidedly anti-solar, large solar. But the big question is, should we be so much against it and so restrictive that we just don't allow it? And here we have this ordinance, which I agreed to sponsor right after we enacted a pretty restrictive solar ordinance, a previous council. And I just, I'm, I'm going to listen to the rationale and argument. But my question is, to my fellow councils or anybody is, what do we do with contaminated sites in town? Throughout the town, and there's very different types of contamination, and what is your solution for them? It's fine to prohibit something, but what is your suggestion for the alternative dealing with those sites? Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I would just like to make a comment to that, you know, I, I, you know, after thinking more, you know, I, I think this would be a great workshop topic. On contaminated sites, bring in, you know, subject matter experts, you know, allow them to, you know, go over various, you know, different types of contamination and remediation and, and what kind of projects or, or anything is done with these. I, I, I just think that to make a decision that could affect so many people, I, I really, that's the, that's the direction that I would like to go. So again, if, if any other counselors have any comments or concerns, I'd like to hear them.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President Counsel Gary. I concur with you on this. I mean, if this is something we can always go back and look at, and I do agree with Counselor Scott, we, we do have experts, you know, the planner, zoning, but something like this, it's as delicate, that can upset just about anything, would be a good idea to have somebody from DEM, an expert, come in and just, you know, give us, you know, give us their look at it, and it would be a good idea for the workshop, too.
Go ahead, Scott, if you have to.
Mike was kind enough to give me a ride tonight, and he's a good friend of mine. But that's addressed by a special use permit. A special use permit does not have to be granted. The, the granting authority, which is usually, I believe, the zoning board, I could be wrong. They would, you would have to have a good reason to get a special use permit. But the big question is, what do you do in the meantime? You could always say, well, we could go there. But they, they would have to be shown that it's the best solution for that piece of property, and they do not have to grant that. It's completely, they had, at their discretion to grant a special use permit, it's not a given. It just gives them the tools, or a tool to address a problem with a particular site. I just ask you to just reflect on that. I'm listening, I want to be a very logical participant in these proceedings. But I just ask you to think about that, thank you.
Excellent. And I'd also like to, to, you know what, I kind of slipped my mind real, real quick here. Do any of the council members have a comment?
Yes, this is Sharon Davis.
Yes, go ahead, Sharon.
Okay, I would like to know from, if Jim Lanthier's there? Is Jim there?
Let me take a look.
Yes.
He is. Okay, yeah.
I would like to know from Jim Lanthier, if you, if we went contaminated as in all the way across and somebody wanted, who had a contaminated site, wanted to come and ask for, I guess, a special permit? Can, can the council and the planning board consider that? Or are they shut down totally if you put in all the way across? In the contaminated area?
Yes, this is Jim Lanthier, town planner. If you put in across the row for contaminated site solar, you certainly wouldn't be able to do it by right. I would say that the opportunity is always there for someone to petition the town council for a special project or, or some sort. Again, I'm not sure of the, you know, exact mechanism to do this. Probably should be a consultation with our town solicitors and they can advise how we could address a contaminated site, should it come up.
Thank you, Jim.
Would you like me to speak to that, or?
Yes, yes.
I mean, the, the, the easy answer is that the ordinance can always be amended again later. If there's, you know, if, if there's, if circumstances change or there's a reason for, for the amendment.
Okay. I just wanted to know, obviously, it appears that no matter what you have on these, on this table, anybody can come and ask for an exception, right?
Well, if, if the use is prohibited across the board, then there's really no, I mean, even a zone change wouldn't work, because if it's prohibited in all the zones, then a zone change wouldn't work. So it would really have to take an ordinance amendment.
I'd like to ask this solicitor. Scott Billhurst, I'd like to ask the solicitor specifically. In regard to that, I don't know what experience you have in other cities and towns dealing with contaminated sites, in the use of contaminated sites. Whether or not they just reduce the taxes on them because it's limited what you can do with the property, or whether or not either solar or some other use is permitted so that the landowner has at least some use of their property. I think that's really the issue. It's, for me, it's not just whether or not you allow a solar panel there. That's not the real issue, is what a landowner can do with their property if it's deemed contaminated. And also, there's different types of contamination, you know, there could have been a gas spill, there could be some other type of contamination. But what you're saying is that if you don't put an S, I would say, particularly an RF80, because that's most of the land in Hopkins and is under the RF80 designation, that you would have a situation where particularly, there could be contamination and you would knock out somebody's use of their property. I'm also thinking about, as I stated earlier, we have some places that were garage or repair shops, and maybe those are not in an RF80 zone, but what do you do with those properties? Former garages, repair shops, and the like, that may or may not have some level of contamination because they had gas tanks previously buried there, or they, it was a junkyard and could be fuels or other things that have saturated in the ground and things of that nature. That's what I'm thinking about, thank you.
Solicitor, this is Counsel Gary. Even if we did go across this, this, is this something in your, in your thoughts that is something we could do on a case by case basis if somebody came before the council?
Well, I, I, I mean, if, if you have no's across the board, it means the use is prohibited. And in theory, the only way to get around that would be a use variance for the land, which is very difficult for the zoning board to grant. But you can, you know, whatever ordinance you pass now can be amended in the future. So if the, you know, the town gets more information about these contaminated sites and decides to amend the ordinance, they, that's absolutely possible. But I would say you're, you know, everybody's hands would pretty much be tied if there are no's across the board. Because even then, even a zone change at that point, even like you, if, if manufacturing zone is, is no, then, you know, a zone change to manufacturing doesn't, doesn't help anymore.
Scott Billhurst again, I, my question to the solicitor is this. Procedurally, if you use an S, which is special use permit, there's no requirement for the zoning board to review, the planning board, or any government entity to grant that. That is strictly the option, and they can use certain criteria about, they could check with the DEM or certain standards, what could be done on that type, type of property, whether it's solar or anything else. Because the bigger question is, is how do you give a landowner, property owner, use of all their property, even though it might be limited because of the condition of that property? How do you respond to that?
Well, a special use permit has, state law has built into it certain criteria that the zoning board has to make findings on to grant it. Some of those criteria do have to do with environmental concerns. So anyone wanting to build on a contaminated site would have to satisfy, to the, to the zoning board satisfaction at least, that they had satisfied those environmental issues.
So there's no requirement that the zoning board to review would have to grant a special use permit? The burden of proof would be on the applicant and, but it still wouldn't solve the bigger problem in the town of Hopkins and with, you know, various sites that were previously landfills or maybe garages or repair shops that, some, or any type of business where there's a potential for contamination.
Well, the zoning board, no, I mean, that, you're correct that the burden of proof would be on the applicant. I, I'm not particularly knowledgeable in strategies for developing contaminated sites. I think that might be more of a town planner question than, than it would be for, for the attorneys. But you are correct that anyone who wanted a special use permit would have to come in and, and present experts to, who would satisfy the members of the zoning board that they've taken care of the environmental concerns.
Mr. President, I'd like to have Town Planner Lanthier remark upon my question, on my comment, please.
Yes, Jim Lanthier, town planner. I, I first want to say that everything that our town solicitor said is absolutely correct. And in, in regards to your question, Counselor, I'm not sure exactly what it is. If they don't, a zoning board does not have to grant a special use permit, that's, that's for sure. There are criteria that they, or findings that they have to make before they grant the special use permit. So, is that, did that answer your question, or?
Do you have any, excuse me? I'm trying to drink a coffee and put my mask back on, so, bear with me. What I'm trying to say is that my real issue is how do you deal with contaminated sites? And one of the potentials is solar, it's not the only address. But the fact of the matter is, is that because there's different types of contamination, but what is the, what is the solution to that problem? And the special use permit, I don't see what the problem is because the burden of proof is on the applicant. There's no obligation to the zoning board to review to approve it. So I can't see the reason for no, because even if they reject 90% of them and there's one that they think has merit, you're tying up an applicant and something that could benefit the town.
I would just like to make a comment before anybody else makes a comment here. And, and my comment is this. My proposal was to, one, have the town council ask questions of experts. I, I, I am not comfortable putting my name and opening something up by putting a special use permit if I do not know the facts in, you know, the ramifications and the procedures. I mean, there, there may be certain ways to do certain things on contaminated sites, and I would like to know what those ways are before I make any decision. I mean, I, I think that's fair, you know, that, that's a fair statement. So I just want to let that be known. And I apologize for cutting in on, on anyone's answer or response there. So if, if anybody, anybody else, or I should say, any, any other town council members have any comments before? Hold on one second, Scott. Bob, do you have a comment?
Yeah, yeah, I do. So while I agree that we need to address contaminated properties in town, I think that we need to have a handle on what, what's the extent of that? You know, how, how many properties are contaminated? What's the extent of contamination? What's the type of contamination? And I don't think that we really effectively can address this and consider solar to be the silver bullet that's going to solve everybody's problem if we don't understand, you know, the extent of the problem and, and what it really is. And, and in fact, I'll, I'll point out that as far as I remember, our current solar PSES ordinance doesn't even address contaminated properties at all. So I'm definitely in support of, of putting ends across the board just to, to stop the, the spread of, of large, you know, large solar projects. And then, you know, look at contaminated sites in, in a workshop, like, like Steve said. And, you know, get, get some, some good information about what other cities, what other states do with contaminated properties and how, how do they handle them? Let's get a handle on it. But I, I, I kind of want to not spend a lot of time on dealing with, you know, how are we going to support, you know, people with, with contaminated properties now? Because I, I don't, I don't think this is necessarily the answer, especially on RF80. I really cannot support, you know, solar on contaminated RF80 because we're trying to stop the spread of solar on RF80.
Thank you, Bob. Sharon, do you have any comments?
I would go along with yours and Bob Marvel's. I, I, I agree that we should put ends all the way across and we can talk about it in a workshop later.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Counsel Gary, do you have any other comments on this?
No, I agree with that, I just, if, you know, I agree with, I agree with Counselor, Counselor Marvel, I agree with Counselor Davis, I agree with you. I just think if we do put ends all the way across this, is, is with the understanding we can come back and see this, or are we just putting ends all across this just to end the problem right now?
My, my stance is putting ends across to get more knowledge, to, to, to be able to, to gain the knowledge, to come back and then revisit it.
Oh, no, I'm on board with you. If you want to bring somebody in and have a workshop on that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's something that we could potentially do. I mean, I, I mean, I, I just, I, I just want to do my due diligence. I just want to make sure we're, you know, I want to open a can of worms. And again, you know, it's not a nail in the coffin of contaminated sites. I, I agree, the, these are things that we need to, to become aware of. We need to, to know where they are in town, all that type of stuff. So on that topic, I, I'm going to open this up, just, I, I see three hands. I'm going to allow three people to speak. Please have your comments be shortened in five minutes. I would appreciate it. And thank you. So Joe, go ahead, Joe Moreau.
Good evening, it's Joe Moreau, Joe Road. At the last workshop, I had made a suggestion about a work schedule. Has that been decided if we're going to do something like that? I haven't really heard anything from that, Steve.
Um, Joe, we, we haven't. So what, what we did to lack short workshop, we, we worked through definitions and the use table to see how that would affect the rest of the ordinance as it's laid out. So, but that, that is noted. That is something that we can have for discussion when, when we get to those certain sections in, in this ordinance.
Okay, great. I, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it's, it's still on the table. I received an email from Chris Curran's from ngri.pub. Was, an email was sent to Jim Lanthier on January 5th of this year. It was concerning Chris's observations on proposed solar ordinance amendments. And I confirm that the, the council also received this information. Because there are really 14 points that, that needed to be considered, as Chris pointed out. I agree with your comments about the contamination and having experts be involved. And I think Chris is certainly a person to my point. And the second point is, Gina Fuller is a district manager for Southern Rhode Island Conservation District. And Gina spoke, as we're aware, at one of our workshops. She had a lot of excellent points. I spoke to Gina today, and she stressed again that the council needs to proceed with caution with these proposed amendments. And if the council needs any help, they could reach out to Gina. She did tell me today also that there are penalties by the state if rules are not followed. I know that was a question that came up. And one of the things we, we talked about was that if a farmer wanted one ground mounted solar panel to power their pumps or their farm equipment, under the current proposal, they would not be allowed to do that. And I'll say it again, I think we, I know we don't look at that separately, but we really need to help the true farmers in our town. I believe we should take advantage of the expertise of Gina and Chris. I was in contact today with a resident who brought something to my attention I never thought about before. Basically, that solar was installed on only three sites that were already zoned manufacturing. The pushback against solar started with the old depot project. And the biggest issue was the attempt to change RF80 to special commercial. You know, and at that meeting, we had 160 people. So that really got people on board, but I never thought about the point of utilizing what manufacturing space we currently have. I want to thank the town council and the town staff for all of their hard work to provide these workshops. It is a lot of work behind the scenes that we don't even realize. In my opinion, these workshops are to share ideas and make suggestions to create the best PSES for our town. We may agree to disagree on some topics, but that is okay, it's a workshop. What is not okay is when I received a nasty What is not okay is when I received a nasty fifteen paragraph email on January twentieth telling me how wrong I was for what I said at the workshop on January nineteenth. I have the right to respectfully express my ideas. A resident is not going to tell me what I can say and what I can't say. I'll not, I will not get into an email ba- battle either. One of the last questions asked in this email, and there were many, believe me, was, Joe, what happened to you? I can answer that question now. I realized what was really happening. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Joe. Um, and next up, Carol, please state your name and address.
Carol DeRota in Pleasant View Drive. I just wanted to comment on the contaminated sites, which is the topic right now. I would think, um, you know, from everything Counselor Hurst has said, that we should know where we truly have contaminated sites throughout Hopkinton. The definition would require that that has been confirmed by Rhode Island DM with a letter of responsibility. So I think like you, uh, like Counselor Moffett and Counselor Marvel has said, we need to work with facts and we need the actual statements on where we have contaminated sites based on what our IDM says and not be speculating you know, how big this issue really is. I also, you know, I got in a little bit late, so I don't know if I missed um, discussion on the accessory solar energy system entry on the district use table. Pardon?
No, you did not.
That that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Eric, go ahead, Eric.
Thank you, Eric Pipler on Woodville Road. Um, I just want to say very quickly, I agree with President Moffett, Counselor Counselors Geary, Marvel, and Davis, and also our town solicitor. Um, I think that we, I think that the, what we're doing here, what we we did over the last several minutes is I think we took a pretty simple idea and made it maybe too complicated. I I believe that what I was hearing from the majority of the council was that, you know, we don't want to take a shot in the dark on something that we don't understand. You know, contaminated sites could be dumps, uh, old gas station quarries, there could be lots of different things. And they probably all have different characteristics, so to the issue of devising a special use permit, you can't do that unless you have confidence in the criteria that you're going to prescribe for the special use permit. So I just don't think the town council should waste any more time you know, hoping for the best and trying to put some criteria there. I think it's a great idea to study this problem further. And I just want to note that every time in Hopkinton, when we've put um, any form of solar development in a table as a right, we've ended up getting in some pretty nasty situations where the developer wanted to re- interpret his right one way. And the planning board wanted to interpret it a different way. And the town council wanted to interpret that right a third way. So, I mean, the classic example is with our current PSES ordinance. You know, yes, um, we attempted to make a restrictive um, ordinance, but then the town council promptly ignored the lot coverage limitations on the Carapesa project, the Shurenzia project, and the Kamali project. That's just a matter of record. They decided that they wouldn't be bound by that. Though I really fear going down the same path with contaminated sites. You know, as far as the tax assessment, I mean, the tax assessment is done on fair market value. So I don't think that the value of the site, if it's certified to be contaminated, is going to be valued in the same way as if, uh, you know, somebody could build houses on it. Um, I just think none, these are all non-issues, and I think the central fact is that we want to protect residents, you know, and butters and our precious aquifer. And that's going to take some further work, and uh, there's a certain urgency here to move on to the main business of the ordinance, and I think that can wait. Um, then finally, um, as the town solicitor said, you know, if if the town council um, starts investigating Subtown Road and determines that it looks um, promising, then the town council can entertain um a an amendment to the solar ordinance to allow development on contaminated sites um, by special use permit under a set of criteria that you can have confidence in. But I just, I just don't see the point of taking a shot shot in the dark here. It's just, you know, I just want to support the town council on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Just one, one last one, and and this is going to be the last question from the public. A phone number four zero one two three zero nine five nine three. You can talk, but please state your name and address.
Hi, Carolyn Light, forty-three Forest Glen Drive. Um, I uh, I'm going to side with Scott on this contaminated site issue. And there are a couple of reasons. Uh, the discussion that's happening right now sounds self-serving to the town. In my mind, the opportunity to develop a manufacturing or a commercial property that is contaminated to develop it with solar is incentive to look at the town's goal of preserving our forests and our lands and our trees and our aquifer. What you're doing by striking it is you are taking away any any incentive to remediate the land. If I had a neighbor that had half a dozen junk cars on their property, and they said they wanted to get rid of the junk cars and they wanted to remediate the land, and solar in a limited capacity would help support the financial burden of doing that. I would rather they did that. On a manufacturing property, on a commercial property, I think the incentive needs to be there. And what you guys are proposing is you're proposing, A, a handcuff that is going to limit any financial opportunities the town has to gain revenues by the remediation and development of solar. And you're proposing a self-serving thing, for instance, we want to put solar on the on the dump, the town wants to do that, and we'll revisit this contamination issue when we're ready to do that. I don't think you should close this discussion without hammering that out. And the fact that there are experts that are readily available, who can point to you of uh, several communities around the state that specifically target contamination for solar development is uh, it it's being short-sighted. So you might be under a time limit here, but I don't think you should wrap this up with some generic end. Right now, there's no harm in leaving the opportunity open for the community. And there's no, certainly no harm in having a proposed development come to the table, to the planning board, the zoning board, and the town council offering to A, pay additional revenues for the land, and B, clean up the contamination which is destructive to our aquifer, destructive to our green space, and destructive to our our habit and habitat. Uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Hurst, I'd like to thank uh, Carolyn Light for her kind words. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I I I would just like to add that, um, you know, I I I personally do not feel like we're trying to put a handcuff on. I I don't think it's the, that's our intent. I I think our intent is to is to um, to to wrap our heads around the uh, the potential of contaminated sites in in what the best direction to move forward would be. So with with that being said, um, I just want to make sure there, um, are there any objections to putting? And I know where Scott stands as far as that goes, but I I just wanted, so we can move forward. Any objections?
I have no objections moving forward. I think uh, my feelings on this subject and we're going to be voting on this as a whole to present it to the hearing and what we do at the hearing on the final vote. We might have some disagreements and some amendments or whatever, but uh, just to move this along, I'll probably vote for it to go to the he- uh, the final hearing, and then I might support some changes to be for it or against it, or we'll see where it goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, with um, with that being said, um, putting ends across the board here, Attorney Squares, would, is that going to, I mean, obviously, change some of the definitions here? Would you recommend uh, removing the definitions of contaminated site or I mean, leave them in there for?
So you really, I think you could do it one of two ways. Obviously, if you put ends across the board, no one's going to be, it's not going to be a use that could actually be developed in the town absent a change in the ordinance.
Sure.
If you wanted to just take it out and also take out the corresponding provision in the body of the ordinance, um, and then just revisit it afresh, you could. If you wanted to leave the structure in there to say, you know, someday we might revisit it, and here's a starting point, you could leave it in there. But you know, if it's going to be ends across the board, you know, you could also just eliminate the the column and um, and uh, then re- you'd have to revisit the definitions too and take the contaminated site definition out. You'd probably also have to amend the accessory, the accessory solar definition, since that was defined as, I'm sorry, you'd have to, you'd have to define, redefine the um, large-scale solar definition. So it all, it just depends on whether or not you want to keep the structure in there for a future.
Sure, I mean, um, I would probably suggest a cleaner document. I think that would probably, um, you know, probably be the best course of action. You know, and and again, we'll, we we will have this language that that's in here, which seemed to serve a pretty good purpose when it, when it comes to contaminated sites and seeing the fact that, you know, um, I'm recommending us uh, putting it across, ends across because we need to uh, to be more educated on on this topic, so uh, these definitions aren't going anywhere. We will have them for future use. But I would prefer is having a cleaner document, um, you know, and and not leave that language in there.
Okay.
Yes, Sharon, go ahead.
You still need to have the the contaminated ones in the definition.
Sure.
Just like for the large-scale solar. Just the definition.
Yeah. Agreed. So I guess if if we're leaving the definition in there, then I would probably suggest leaving it in the in the use table with the ends across the board. Just because, um, just like you did, I know your planner stated the last time, which is correct, by not including a use within the use table, it impliedly makes it prohibited. But I think just to make it absolutely clear, it's better to have the 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 line and then just have N in every zone so that anyone that reads the ordinance and sees the definition, when they look to the use table, they'll know this is a prohibited use.
Right. Thank you.
Any objections to that? Okay, so with that being said, um, I would like to move on something else. On our land use table here, um, I am in in considering the language that we had on accessory where it says uh, generates no more, and the fact that Mr. Squares had the ground mounted in here, I am proposing we are, we're we're going to stay on page three for the mi- uh, for the moment. Counselor Geary. I am going to propose hold on one second here, pull it up, is a, another accessory use, and that is residential ground-mounted accessory solar. And that would be only added, and and again, um, council members, please listen up, this is only going to be added with certain requirements and stipulation. And so here it goes. Um, I just wrote a little something. It says, sometimes rooftop solar power systems are not ideal for their residential homeowner. Some roofs are too small or have too many hindrances such as chimneys, vents, or skylights. Sometimes a roof is beset by too many trees, shadings make um, solar unattainable. There simply is not enough light available to hit the panels to generate enough electricity to make it worthwhile. Then there are some roofs which have orientations uh, other than south-facing, where they would lose some efficiency. And finally, there are some roofs that must be fixed or fortified, adding to the cost. So my proposal is to include um, ground-mounted um, solar energy as a residential accessory structure in RFR eighty only, subject to the following requirements. And again, um, I I'm looking for feedback on on this from the council. One stipulation would be a hundred-foot setback from side or rear property line. Any potential ground-mounted solar energy could not be located within a front yard of a property. This would also be approved by a special use permit only. Total size of all solar energy systems may not produce, accessory energy systems may not produce any amount beyond the average and annual consumption. It may not be used to generate power for commercial purposes or for resale. Ground-mounted solar arrays will not be allowed to exceed more than four hundred square feet. Height of all equipment shall not exceed six feet from the average grade of the lot to be built on. A disconnect will be required at the time of installation, and the electric utility provider shall be notified of this installation. All power lines all power lines, all transmission lines from a ground-mounted solar energy ground-mounted accessory solar energy system to any building or any structure shall be located underground. All applicants proposing ground-mounted solar accessory energy systems shall provide an appropriate buffer to adequately mitigate visual impacts on surrounding properties and neighborhood in general. Selection of the proposed buffer should be based on the context and characteristics of the specific site. Fencing with design and materials that are appropriate to the surrounding natural and built environment may be permitted. However, vegetative buffers are preferred. The vegetative buffer surrounding the perimeter of the installation shall consist of plants from Rhode Island native plant database and shall be planted at a full specified height at the time of planting. The applicant shall submit a landscaping plan prepared by a licensed registered landscape architect authorized to practice in the state of Rhode Island with building permit application. Then a- any site must include an external disconnect switch, and the owner of the property must file a map showing the location of that switch within the town's police and fire departments. The town building and our zoning enforcement officers may order removal or repair of any accessory ground-mounted solar energy system that is constructed, operated, or maintained in a manner that does not comply with this section or that does not comply with the terms of any approvals or permits issued by the town. Um, a de- uh, decommissioning or removal plan um, at the end of the useful life of accessory ground-mounted solar must be submitted. A proposal for removal uh, cost of the system shall be submitted at the time of application to provide for potential increase in removal cost in the future. I'm going to open it up to comments from the town council.
Yep, count the, Mr. President, Counsel Gary, can you go back to the part about selling back? Selling back to
Uh, I have it here. Uh, the total size of the solar energy system may not produce any amount of energy beyond the average annual consumption. It may not be used to generate power for commercial purposes or resale.
Well, here's the thing right away. I I think everybody has this idea on when people have solar on top of the house, it's going into some battery storage. What that does, it just goes, you know, sunshine, panels absorb it, it goes right back out to the grid at the end of the month, instead of you, instead of getting a check, you get X amount off your electric bill, depending on how much you generated.
So I got a question uh, for Lisa. And correct me if I'm wrong. Has, have we got any recommendations from either the fire departments in town about uh, their input on the solar? Lisa?
This is Lisa? No.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Steve?
Yes, go ahead, Sharon.
Um, can you, uh, I I like what you said, um, I, but I'd like to see it in writing. I I'm not taking that many notes, so I I guess I need to have you give a copy of the, what you just said to Lisa to distribute to everyone. to Lisa to distribute to everyone. On the council.
I will do that.
Yeah, Mr. President, I concur with Counselor Davis on that one. Just there's a little bit of wordage I'd like to look at.
Sure, so I will, I will submit this for the for the record. I will submit it as an amendment to the proposed ordinance. And I guess I could, you know, with that, make that and put it on the town website, I'm assuming with any other addition, would that be the proper?
Well, and Attorney Swerks has to put it in too.
Sure. Okay. So could I submit that to you, Attorney Swerks, and you could put that into the to the updated?
Sure, so that would be creating a use, a use code for accessory. I guess you'd split up your accessory solar into two. One would be the what's in there now, accessory solar, then maybe put after that parentheses roof mounted. And that could be Ps across the board. And then there'd be like an accessory solar ground mounted. And that would be special use permit and the RFR 80 and maybe the manufacturing or just the RFR 80.
Just the RFR 80.
Okay. Yeah, I could do, I could do that. And then it would be ends across the board everywhere else?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I can, I can create a draft with that.
So, so we would.
So, so I'm sorry, just the question would be if it's, if it's special use permit in the RFR 80. You'd have to answer the question of which, whether it would be A in both the aquifer primary and overlays in the secondary, or whether it would be A and just one of the two.
So I would say. I mean. The way that I understand this through all these discussions and workshops that we've had, that the aquifer, you know, secondary and primary cover the whole town. So how, so how does that, how is that? So that can be a P, right? No? Yeah, permitted.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Bob, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is Bob Marvel. I would suggest if, I think this, I think we're gonna find this is kind of going to be a rare and unique case. I think in this case, we're basically looking at putting ground mounted solar in RFR 80. And I think that it it behooves us to make sure that the right, the right review is is being done regardless of the aquifer. I would suggest putting As on both.
And I think if you're going in for a special use permit, you could probably combine both the applications at once so that you're not taking any additional time or taking any additional money to have the application reviewed.
Mr. President, I'd like to hear what the town plan has to say on this. Jim, you out there?
Yes, Jim Lamphier, town planner. I'm not sure exactly what the question, I mean, we, if you put an A in primary or secondary, that means that you need an aquifer protection permit. You could go to the zoning board for that at the same time that you go for a special use permit for the for the ground mounted solar in the RFR 80. So that, you know, you could do them simultaneously, but I believe they're two separate, you know, approvals.
Hey, Jim. Is there any discussion on that? Do you? Good, okay, so, so, so then I'll, I'll recommend we put As there. I mean, if they're going through a special permitting process anyway, and they can combine those two. I mean, they're two different permits, but that's gonna be my suggestion. Are there any objections? Okay, not, not hearing any, then let's move forward.
And so you're gonna make the one, the ground one, you're gonna make it number 308 and the contaminated 309? The numbers?
Yeah, I mean, however, Attorney Swerks would like to present that, I mean, if that's the best way to do it.
Yeah.
All right, now, I'm trying to think here. So back to definitions then on on page one. If we're adding ground mounted accessory solar, do we need to add a definition or is ground mounted? As it's stated, going to satisfy that?
So the definition as it's stated does contemplate ground mounted. The only restriction that's in there now is that it generates no more than the energy, no more energy than 100% of the energy that is necessary to support the principal use of the parcel on which the system is located. So, you know, you could keep that definition and then put further restrictions in the body of the ordinance. You could do that.
Okay, so, so on that accessory, that accessory solar system where it says one entirely roof mounted, should we put or two ground mounted and generates no more?
Uh, yeah, that, that, that would, that would help clarify it. That makes sense. I can put that.
That's good.
Now, is there, would this be overkill to to add residential accessory solar energy system? Is that?
You know, I think the way you could handle that is in the use table, just putting it as in in any, any zone you don't want it. And if it's only in the residential zone, then it would be, so I think you could handle it that way.
Okay. So moving on, so I guess we'll move into the body of the of the document here.
Which page might that be, Mr. President?
The page four of Council Gary. If you see anything in here, Attorney Swerks just kind of stopped me. I'm gonna read through it here. If you feel like there's anything that doesn't need to be read or, I mean, I'll, I'll still read it just so we know what's, what's being taken out of it. But I'm gonna start with section 5.3 point, no, section 5.3, solar energy systems. 5.31, purpose and applicability. A, the purpose of this section is to regulate the installation of solar energy systems by providing standards for the placement, design, construction, operation, monitoring, modification, and removal of such systems. These standards are intended to ensure that solar energy systems are compatible with the surrounding area, provide for public safety, and minimize impacts on scenic, natural, and historic resources. Provisions of this section shall apply as specified herein to construction, operation, and/or repair of solar energy installation in the town. Are there any objections to this definition or not definition but wording? Okay, B, accessory solar energy systems for which a building permit application has been submitted prior to the enactment of this section shall not be subject to the requirements found herein. Any objection to the wording?
No, I concur with.
Not hearing any. 5.3.2, large scale solar energy systems. A, large scale energy solars, energy, large scale energy?
Solar energy.
Yep, large scale solar energy systems shall be prohibited throughout the town of Hopkinton. That states that in our, in our use table. 5.33, accessory solar energy systems and solar canopies. Yep, we struck solar canopies and solar canopies. A, accessory solar energy systems shall be permitted as set forth in the table of permitted uses in section five of this ordinance. We'll have to revisit, we will visit that one once we get to that part. B, accessory solar energy systems in all residential and commercial zones shall be roof mounted only except as allowed by the farm viability ordinance in section 5.3. So we're gonna need to change that to.
Do we take out the farm viability ordinance altogether?
That's not in, that's not in the, in this proposed ordinance here.
So it needs to be taken out or not?
We, I can answer this question. Prior, prior to last two times we've been together, we've talked about the Farm Viability Act came out of the solar ordinance.
Yeah, and the point of that language there was just to say this ordinance is not intended to change anything in the farm viability ordinance. So that, since when we took that amendment out, I put that language in just to say anything that's in here now is not meant to touch what's already in your farm viability.
So, so, listener, so Counselor Davis is correct in saying that we are gonna take Farm Viability Act out of this.
And if I could comment on, if we're going to be changing the ground mounted to only the RFR 80 zone, I could suggest many language that says accessory solar energy systems in all zones except the RFR 80 zone shall be roof mounted only, except as allowed by the farm viability.
Is this? And that's for B? And how would you read that again?
Accessory solar energy systems in all zones other than the RFR 80 zone shall be roof mounted only, except as allowed by the farm viability ordinance, section 5.5 dash seven.
But all accessory solar energy systems are not gonna be roof mounted only, right? We're gonna have ground mounted in the RFR 80?
Yeah, because what happens, you have this historic house and you can't fit panels on your roof. Like Council Mop was saying earlier, you have trees, the sun doesn't hit XYZ chimney or anything like that.
So I guess the discussion on the, on the use table, I thought that there was gonna be just a special use permit for RFR 80 zone, but then ends across the board in the other zones except A. But, you know, I guess the idea here is just whichever zones you want to have the ground mounted accessory solar. You just specify here where they're permitted and, and then just say all other zones have just roof mounted.
Right, so could we just say accessory solar energy systems? In residence, because that's where only.
So this is Bob Marvel, I have a comment. So as we have been very specific in the land use table on where we're using this or where we're permitting it and not permitting it, do we even need item B at all? Can we just strike it altogether?
You could strike it.
I think so.
I got a question for the, both the attorney and the town planner. I'm sitting here. Now that I remember it off the top of my head, but how does this section sync with the ordinance that we passed in January 1919 dealing with solar? As far as conflicting with the acreage and the type of land it's on? I'm just trying to think off the top of my head, maybe you can correct me.
Were we talking about the accessory residential ground mounted?
I'm talking about, you know, 3% or 3 acres or less and things of that nature.
That's, that's not gonna be in here anymore.
Yeah. That, that, you know, in the body of the ordinance that when we had the standalone uses, it was stricter than, than what was previously allowed in the prior ordinance. But, you know, if you're not gonna have any standalone principal solar, you can consider whether you need that.
No, I just think it's a relevant, relevant question and, you know, you have five people on the council, everybody has a different perspective and, you know, a history of the issues and things of that nature. And there's learning experience for all of us. And you sit here and a lot of times you leave a meeting and said, I should have asked that or maybe I shouldn't have said that or whatever the case may be.
Okay. So I'm, I'm looking at C here and after reading it, it almost seems as if everything up until a roof mounted solar energy system proposed on new structures should be, should be removed.
Where are you?
On, on C.
Okay.
What it, Attorney Swerks, should we go to the accessory solar, should we go to the use table there for all that? In 5.33? The accessory solar systems and kind of handle that, would, that's gonna kind of dictate the rest of the language?
Uh, so all 5.33C says is that if you're gonna have ground mounted solar over if you're gonna have ground mounted solar, that's more than 1750 square feet. In addition to the special use permit review, you'd need review by the planning board?
Well, my restriction or my stipulation, my proposal has nothing more than 400 square feet.
Okay.
My, my goal is to mimic whatever you could put on a roof to, to allow someone to attain 100% of their yearly use.
So then what I would suggest would be putting language that says in that section, newer expanded accessory ground mounted solar great, shall not be greater than 400 square feet. And then inclusive of the inter row and panel collector spacing. And then you could just leave it at, then cut out the rest and then start up again at roof mounted solar energy systems proposed on new structures shall be reviewed according to the review procedure of this ordinance for the structure addition. So I guess I could take your restriction and just incorporate it right in here. Newer expanded accessory ground mounted accessory systems shall, shall not be greater than 400 square feet.
I, Council Gary here, I kind of disagree with that because what happens if you have a bigger house or the house is bigger? Four and square feet isn't big.
Is there language we could put in it to say, you know, whatever the, I mean, three, four bedroom house?
I get what you're saying. You don't want to have more than 1/4 of the energy, so.
And size wise, I'm not looking to have a big monstrosity on someone. I'm looking to, to allow somebody to be able to, to have an option.
I know, but square, four and square feet is not big. That's not even.
It's 20 by 20, right?
Right, and I mean, and on a 2,000 square foot house, I mean, it's probably gonna handle most of the. I mean, again, I mean, we want to make it 100%. You obviously don't want to limit somebody to 85% of the production while they're, you know, A, trying to be green and trying to, you know, use a.
Yeah, 20 by 20 panel is not that big. I disagree with the wording on that. I think maybe something like.
Up to 100%?
Up to 100%, no more than say, well, it's kind of very on the house size, new, where it'd be new building or an older housing building. Something like that. I don't think we should be in the, I think we should leave it open somehow where where, all right, we're gonna go ahead and put solar on this, but we need to see, okay, what's your average consumption times X amount of panels, you know what I'm saying?
Would there be any way, because they're gonna go, they're going through the special use permit process. Would there be any avenue for them to provide documentation of usage to?
A national, international grid or power supply study on what they, what they're using versus size.
Right. So actually, if you look at subsection E, we do have that. That says at the time of the application for building permit or development plan review, and we could take out the development plan review. But the way we had it was if from zero to a certain square feet, you, you just get the special use permit. From that number to a higher number, you get development plan review and then higher than that number, you're capped. But you could just, you could. But you could just, you could use that structure if you wanted to, but then in subsection E, we put the applicant needs to demonstrate that there's no more than hundred percent necessary for occupying the parcel. And for the exist, for, for parcels with existing uses, they give the three previous years energy consumption. And for new uses, they need to provide an estimate of, or a proposed use, provide an estimate of an electrical usage prepared and certified by an electrical engineer. But those were our proposals.
Right, I mean, I like the idea of, you know, if, if the ground mounted is A, going to especially use permit anyway.
Right.
At the time, they could present what they're going to need for square footage
Right.
to, to accommodate for the one hundred percent. And again, I, I apologize for, for kind of maybe going back and asking these questions and stuff, just so much information right now.
I think we can all agree, Council Gear, I think we do all, we can all agree, just like anything, everything's getting a little smaller, cell phones used to be huge, now they're small. Solar panels used to be big, now they're getting smaller, they're getting more streamlined. Now, it's, I think we can all look at the storage building here in town, extremely well done, very small panels, can't even see it. I didn't stay what you're saying, I think we good, we said, okay, national grid, councils, Council Hurst wants to have solar on top of this house, great. Okay, this is what you use, this is, you know, how many panels you're going to get XYZ. But I also understand what you're saying, there should be a limit to, that's it.
Right.
Right, but I'm just, yeah. So is that something, Council Gear, uh, slister, is that something maybe we could slide in there? In accordance with National Grid, National Grid survey of the house, how much power they use to formulate some kind of how many, what the square footage of the panels would be?
I, I mean, you, you could, I, I don't, I'm not an engineer, I don't know how practical that is. It seems burdensome on the applicant, but I don't, I, I don't see why you couldn't do it.
In subsection E here, Council Gary, I mean, as Attorney Spears went over, you know, on, on a parcel with exists, existing principal units, the applicant shall provide the energy consumption documentation for uses from previous three years. So if you're in a house, you know, you're going to use the three previous year average and that's going to determine the size of your solar. So, I mean, it's, it's not going to be anything bigger than what would be on the roof. So if that's what they're going to put on the roof, that's what they would put in the ground, I think that sounds reasonable. Again, you know, obviously tech, technology is better, there may be a, a better solar panel that produces more, more, more electricity, more, more efficient. So, um, so on behalf of, I, I mean, I mean, the proposer, I mean, do you, is this the language that you would?
Yeah, Council President, I, I do think that that does put a limit on it. You know, we did put square footage limits in there too. Now granted, our square footage limits are pretty large and they could be brought down. Or instead, you could just take out the square footage limits like was suggested by Councilman Gary and just stick with the limitation that would come from showing their last three years usage or for new structures, you know, getting your electrical engineer to certify to the anticipated usage.
Yeah, I like that.
So I could amend subsection C just to take out that square footage limitation on the ground mounted and just put, and started at roof mounted solar energy systems shall follow the same approval for the structure that they're going to be put on. And just take out that limitation on ground mounted by square footage and just leave it up to the energy usage.
In, considering that's what we're doing with, with the Bruce, I think that's a, a fair, fair substitution. Again, you know, you know, my concern is, is, is the size of it, I mean, I, I would, I would really like to, I mean, I'm more concerned about neighbors and people seeing it and making sure that is, is, I'll cover it up is the wrong word, but I, I, I want to make sure that it is compatible with the yards in the neighborhood and the landscape. So, I mean, although I do agree that a usage note should determine the size, I just, I'm really weary about it getting too, too big, that's all, I mean, I, I mean, because I, I, I really don't see, and this is my opinion, people running out to put up smaller, these accessory ground mounted in their yard. It's, it's, it's more expensive than putting it on your roof. There's going to be more expensive, you know, cost to, you know, have a, a landscape architect design the, you know, something to, to hide it. So I, I, I just don't see that, but I, I see someone who is, who wants to be greed, who wants to do the right thing and is willing to spend the extra money to go this route. That's kind of how, how I envision it, I mean, I, I don't see somebody who is irresponsible going this route and, and going through this process, I just, that's why I, I, I added some of the stipulations to it. I'd like to hear maybe from Council Gary or Counselor Davis as, as to their opinion on that. Or if they don't have an opinion, then, then that's fine as well.
I think, you know, go ahead, Chair.
I don't know if four hundred square feet is too small or not, but I know that's, that this is the alternative that my husband and I are thinking about for ourselves, because we just put a new roof on and we really don't want holes put in it. So, um, I, I, I like having this option. Uh, you can, but I don't know how, I don't, don't know how many square feet it is going to be or would be. So, um, I don't know if four hundred is too small or not, I don't know. That's, that's all, but I, I like the idea of having this alternative, that's all.
Mr. President?
Yes, Council Gary.
Yeah, Mr. President, uh, Council Gear here, I think, I think everything is good, I think we just leave it in there and leave it up to National Grid to study. And stops there, okay, you, your National Grid does the study or whoever your electrical supplier is, hey, do the study. It's going to be a hundred percent of your last, or a hundred percent of your last reveals, that's it. And before we, you know, of course, when they do that, they have to finish show us exactly, okay, I use this, this. And this is the size pin again, like I said, twenty by twenty is not big. So it would have to go on that consumption of the last three years.
I agree.
And I agree with the Council President that what he's saying as far as neighborhoods, neighbors, I get that. I'm good.
I, I just, Council Hurst, I'm just concerned, you know, we're talking about particularly solar on roofs. And that's why it's crucial that our local fire departments respond to them, they're the ones that have to go on a roof for the solar to fight fires. So I would, hopefully that they will respond and at least have some input. For the council, if they don't get it by the end of the hearing at least, when this thing's adopted, because they, an integral part of our community and they're the ones that fight fires and they're the ones that have to go on roofs. So I really like to have their input on, on this, this thing. The, uh, so it's very important that they make a recommendation, one way or the other, thank you.
Thank you, Scott, um, I, I, I just want to kind of just say that, you know, I, I, I propose this with the idea that, you know, having, having polled, you know, quite a few people that I know who, who have solar on their roof and different size of their houses, um, four hundred was, was the average number. And was part of the reason why I proposed this idea, because I knew four hundred square feet would be easy, easier to hide, easier to screen, that's the word I've been looking for, screen. And I just think I, I'm not comfortable with, with going any, any higher than four hundred. I'm just not. You know, a- again, you know, you have the choice, it's, it, it's given you the, the option. If the four hundred square foot on, on the ground just doesn't work for the size of your house, then, then, then maybe it needs to be roof mounted. I mean, that's kind of.
Well, here, Council.
I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from, one hundred percent, you know, I mean, this is just an option to it, you know what I mean? That's just, that's, that's how I am presenting this.
Here's my other thing I'm looking at too. You know, it's a different world we all live in, so let's just say you have a house, you get, you do your four hundred, four hundred acres of four hundred square feet of solar, which is a twenty by twenty panel. Something happens, all of a sudden, you got to do an addition, mom and dad move in XYZ. You know, that's, that's, that will be the next
Sure.
step up, what happens if you have to do that? So does that mean those people, okay, you're only going to get four hundred square feet and you can't get any more if you do it in addition because mom and dad are coming to live with you? Or what does that mean?
I think it means in the way that I see it, I mean, I, I, I understand it. Again, uh, you know, the smaller ground mounted residential accessory is, is, it's, it's the reason why I proposed it, um, I, I didn't, I, I don't see anybody else, you know, I mean, didn't bring a proposal to the table.
I, I agree, Mr. President, I agree a hundred percent with what you're saying, but I just don't know if four and square feet
Is going to cover it.
It's going to cover or not, I'm not in the, you know, I'm not in the energy business, none of us are, this is, you know, where, this is why I reach out to the town planner or whatever it be. I just don't want to put a number there and all of a sudden it comes, somebody comes back and says, hey, I need another two hundred square feet because I'm only doing seventy-five percent, you know what I'm saying? That's why I say, well, I think we should recommend it at National Grid does a survey, okay, this is the size panels you're going to get. That's it from the last three years. I just don't want to go ahead and put something down, a number, then somebody's got to come back and say, I don't have enough panels to complete this.
Right.
I, when you, when you put a number down like that, you're pretty much saying, okay, done, that's final. Without us, without us really knowing exactly how many solar panels, how many square feet belong on a ranch house.
Well, I know the average kilowatts is ten for, for, for a four hundred square foot system. I mean, that's, that's the output, you know, and that's the typical average of, of a house in America.
I just.
That's, um, I just, so, I mean, I, I'd be willing to go up, I mean, just a hundred maybe to five hundred. I mean, that's going to, that's going to add twenty percent to that, I mean, I, I just, and again, if that's not going to produce a hundred percent of their electricity, I mean, that's kind of, that option for them is, is out the window, I mean, that's, that's kind of how I see it, I, I mean, I'm not trying to be you know, tyrant or, or to be tight. Again, the only reason why I, I, I offered this suggestion was because, because of that. I mean, I one hundred percent agree, I mean, hear what you're saying, Mike, I mean, and, and, and I understand where you're coming from. I, I just looked at it as kind of an option, you know, so i- if, if you do have a smaller house, you have a small roof, then you can do it, you know, the person with the big house and the big roof, I mean, you could probably figure out a roof mounted system, you, you know what I'm saying? And I mean, that's kind of, you know what I mean, I don't want, you, you know what I mean, kind of, uh,
I just don't want to put a number down till, because I honestly don't know exactly what somebody's house is, how many solar panels you're going to take. Jim, uh, Jim Lamphier, do you have, I'm not asking you to hold you this, but do you have any kind of idea what the basic house panel would take for a solar panel?
Well, Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, I, I would say, my, my reaction on this, I, I have to dig into a little bit deeper, but keep in mind that when you're talking residential, you're talking a net metering system. And it's going to be an agreement that's in place between the homeowner and National Grid. National Grid isn't going to allow, first, first of all, they don't want to pay homeowners for, a- as, as utility scale producers. So they're not going to, they're not going to tolerate a homeowner putting a huge system in their yard that they're not even going to, I mean, even if it produced power and was allowed to enter the grid, which I don't think it would be, I mean, National Grid is going to be monitoring this whole thing on their monthly bills, so, so they're going to see what you're pumping into the grid. Then, then I, a- and a homeowner isn't going to go to the expense of building something that they're not going to get credit for anyway. They're not going to give National Grid free, free electricity. So, um, you got to keep in mind, this is, this is basically a system to help a homeowner with their energy bills. It's, it's not, it's not like a large scale solar energy system. So I would say the size of this thing is probably going to be the result of a conversation between the homeowner and National Grid. And again, th- there may be a state program here that would, that would over, overlap this whole discussion that we're having here tonight. I, I, you may, you may have to allow a homeowner to take advantage of this program regardless of how many, you know, kilowatts they use per year. So I, 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 I don't think, I think you might be worrying about something for nothing, to be honest with you, I, I, I don't see huge systems being put in a residential yard. I think, I think it's more important to locate, locate the outdoor panels properly as was mentioned earlier, you know, discouraging them from going in a front yard. Put them, put them away from a, a side yard, a certain distance. So you want to, you want to locate, I mean, I, I would worry more about locating these systems than the size. I think the size is going to take care of itself, you're not going to see live scale things in a backyard.
No, because I think pretty sure National Grid is not going to come out and put exuberant amount of solar panels on your house, just, you know, so they're, for their benefit against the homeowner, so. Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome. So this is Bob Marvel, I have a question. On the, in the table in section C, where we have, you know, roof mounted, roof mounted and then three, three rows of ground mounted. The first one is one through seventeen fifty square feet. Now, I, I was just curious where that seventeen fifty comes from and what it represents.
So that table, um, it's not really, so when I redrafted the ordinance to allow ground mounted after the last discussion, I did it contemplating that it would be limited to the manufacturing zone. So I considered it, you know, much higher energy uses. But I think that with the discussion tonight, where the, really the ground mounted accessory you're thinking of is residential ground mounted accessory, the way to, to change that table would be to just have the first two lines for roof mounted, then a line for ground mounted, you can cut out the square footage, just say ground mounted and then a review procedure would be special use permit, and then you could delete the last two lines.
I agree with that.
Which at the special, um, so at the zoning board, they would, they would be bringing their information from National Grid based on their last three years to the zoning board meeting to be, to be reviewed.
Or yes.
Okay. I'm fine by using subsection E as far as, you know, and on any new construction or any, obviously, existing parcels that are going to use this potential program that they follow this, uh, this stipulation in that subsection. Because I think we're going to find that there, like Jim said, then, then they're not going to be these monstrosities that are going to power these houses. It's, it's just not, I mean, National Grid is not, I mean, and, and people, I mean, these panels cost money. They're, they're not going to go out and, and, and spend five, six, seven, eight thousand dollars more on panels that they, they do not need, I mean, bigger is not necessarily going to be better for these people. So, um, again, um, I, I got some information earlier from the building zoning. I want to say in the last five years, I think it's a hundred and forty-one roof mounted accessory solar in a town of half, in five years. So there's not a major crazy rush to be doing solar panels on roofs. And I, and I just, um, I, I just want to stick. So we're clear on that, we're going to, um, now subsection C is going to stay here. Is that minus the development plan review? Um, at the time of application, a building permit or special use permit, is that something we should add to that? Because we're adding it for ground mounted?
Yeah, that, that would have to be amended to, um, I think it would just have to say at the time of the application for the special use permit, since all the ground mounted, um, uh, accessory is gonna be by special use permit, so.
All right, subsection F, accessory solar energy systems shall not be constructed, installed, or modified as provided in this section before a building permit is obtained. And should be building permit special use?
Uh, yes, I agree. Special use permit, that, that's correct. Oh, well, I'm sorry, uh, this, that implies to both roof mounted and ground mounted. So, uh, I think you could say before a building permit or special use permit as applicable.
So this is Bob Marvel, uh, in, I'm wondering, and may, maybe Jim Lampier can answer this question. Maybe this is a moot point because uh, would a building permit, i- if, if it's ground mounted and we haven't yet received the special use permit, I'm assuming that a building permit would not have happened?
Jim Lampier, Town Planner, I think that's a fair assumption to make. If, if a special use permit is required, then the, a building permit wouldn't be issued until it was, it, it was granted.
Yeah. So I'm assuming we could leave F as it is.
Okay. And then, um, Peter, would now be the time before we got into subsection G to add the language that I'm going to send to you? Because it's relating to ground mounted solar?
Yeah, I agree. I, I, I agree, um, I, I agree, Council President, that you could add that subsection in before G. Um, and then if you were to add that in, um, those restrictions, and then have the roof round, mounted restrictions after that, really a lot of the, what's left in the ordinance, 5.34, uh, 5.35, 5.36, Um, well, you might want to take a look at keeping some parts of 5.37, but 5.39, they could all be deleted.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, so I will submit to you, uh, to add to the next draft, my, my proposal. That sounds good?
Yes.
Okay, subsection G, roof mounted solar energy systems shall be subject to the following requirements.
Mr. President, I'm sorry.
We are on page 5, Mike, or, or Council Gary, apologize. Are you all set, Council Gary?
Yeah. Oh, I thought you wanted me to read.
Oh, no, sure. G, roof mounted solar energy systems shall be subject to the following requirements. Subsection A, it shall not exceed the height requirements prescribed by the zoning district in which they are located. Any objection? Not hearing any?
You're talking about on flat roofs?
No.
We haven't gotten there yet, Scott. B, on flat roofs, accessory solar systems shall be set back from the edge and/or behind architectural features to be minimally visible.
I agree with it.
Okay.
I, I don't, uh, have a problem with that. I was just thinking about what the footage is and the sense for the, uh, the size of the roof, but that would be the answer by minimally visible, so.
Subsection C, panels and devices may be set at a pitch and elevated only if they are not visible from public streets.
This is Bob Marvel. Does that apply to, uh, flat roofs also? I'm assuming the sloped roofs are, uh, the panels are, um, parallel to the roof.
Yeah.
Maybe it doesn't matter.
Steve?
Yes, Sharon.
Okay, the, all of the stuff that you're about to read was in the, was in our former PSES ordinance.
Okay.
All of these things. Just letting you know.
Okay. Well, how, how about this? I mean, we've, I mean, you know, whoever has a copy has a copy. The public's been, um, given copies through the website. I've, I've read all these. I haven't made any notes to objection on any of these. Um, if anybody has an objection on A through K in, in this section, um, please state your objection.
This is Bob Marvel. I, I do have a couple of, actually, I think one change and one question. Um, on uh, item D and item H appear to me to be similar, and I wondered if they were maybe redundant. That's my first question. So, so item D says on pitched roofs, the edge of the solar energy system shall be parallel to the roof line. And on H, it says flush mounting is preferred on pitched roofs and shall not project vertically above the peak of the roof and/or no more than the height requirements for the zone in which they are located. Now, that's a little bit more explicit, but I think it basically covers what's in D. If I'm not mistaken.
I am, the only, how I see that in D is, um, is that the, um, the energy system will be parallel with the roof line. So I think it's just looking to make sure it's square on the roof and they didn't like, make it cockeyed on the 35, or, or like a 45 degree angle.
Sure.
You know what I mean? I, I think that's what you're, yeah, I, I just think it's for squareness. I, 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 I mean, that's how I read D. Uh, flush mounted prefer to pitch roofs project above. So, yeah, I mean, there, I, I think they're just covering that it shall not, you know, just go above that, um.
Okay. Okay, I, I, I will, uh, not have a change there then. Um, the only other item that I, uh, noted was, uh, item F. And it reads, I'll read the first sentence, or I'll, I'll read it. Uh, roof mounted systems need to be cited so as to provide all proper clearances, et cetera. I think that the sir, the words need, need to be cited, shall be, should be changed to shall be cited. Yep. Yep. This is an ordinance. We, we shouldn't have needs to be in might be or any of that, should be, shall, shall be, so. That's my only change on that.
Steve?
Yes, Sharon, go ahead.
Okay, so there, there are two, um, uh, numbers that are not there from the, from the old ordinance. B3 says the existing roof structure and the weight of the PSES shall be taken into consideration when applying for a PSES. I guess that, we can leave that out. But number six says front or road facing installations may be permitted by the planning board if the applicant indicates valid reasons as to why this is the only effective or possible means for utilizing solar energy on the property. Such information shall be certified by a licensed and authorized design professional consistent with the appropriate statutes governing design professionals in the state of Rhode Island. So that is the other thing that's not in there. Open for discussion.
Give me one second.
This is Bob Marvel. So that, that item applied to, um, roof mounted, not, not, um, not flat roofs, but regular sloped roofs.
Yes. I don't, it's just, it's under the roof part, uh, uh, what it is.
I'm gonna guess that most people who want to put solar panels on the front of the roof are going to come back and say that's the south, south side facing side of the roof, and, and that's, you know, that's gonna be their justification.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know if that's, it, it, you know, does, do people feel that that's a problem? I mean, I've, I've seen solar panels on, you know, the front of residential roofs as I drive by it. I don't really think that's a problem.
Yeah, I, I don't see that as a problem either. I think, I, I want to say the majority of the solar systems that I do see are in front of the roof.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to let you know what was and wasn't, what was not brought over, that's all.
Oh, thank you, Sharon. Well, no, I mean, thank you for bringing that to me, because, right, and we discussed it, so thank you. Okay, um, so attorney score is 5.34, what was that?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, that that can, um, that can be deleted now. Um, that can be deleted. Um, as well as 5.35. As well as 5.36. And then 5.37 might be, you might want to delete, but it might have some things in there you want to keep, so I guess you might want to look at that one, too.
Right, uh, because it says here, ground mounted solar energy systems in residential and commercial zoning districts are prohibited.
Right, so that's definitely something you'd want to change. The only thing that I, that I was looking at was 5.37C, and this has the rezoning provision, um, that was in your old PSES, except that your old PSES had 3% or 3 acres. Um, this has it as 2% or 2 acres. Um, I, I guess I'd just point out, if you want to keep that or something like that, that's where we put it. Um, but it also has other things in that section that, um, are not really, that, that are not, are not really applicable to the ordinance that you're grafting because it contemplates bigger s- ground mounted systems.
Yeah, I don't like D. And I'm about subdivisions, I don't like that.
I mean, you, you might be able to just delete 5.3.7.
Yeah, I mean, it's not allowed in manufacturing zones, so we're not gonna have to worry about the 30%, I mean, or any of that. Um, ground mounted solar and residential commercial zoning districts are prohibited, which, we get to strike that because that's where, I mean, we are allowing.
So I thought, I think you could probably just strike 5.3.7. I think you could just take it out. And then I think you could take out 5.3.9 as well.
Brings us to, uh, precedence of approval.
You're gonna strike 5.3.9? Phil, obviously, you know what my sentiment on that is.
Right, that's just carrying over from the language in the district use table. It's just based on you, just, a district use table, it's not applicable.
Well, I just want to point out, uh, for if you read this and people are talking about, uh, who makes a judgment on what's contaminated, it says, let me read it because it's gonna be stricken, but let me indulge me on this. And I won't read the whole thing, but let me just read the beginning of it. A, this section is intended to promote the development of solar energy systems on property that have been identified and confirmed by the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, RIDM, as hazardous waste contaminating site site in order to catalyze property remediation to provide an economic use for otherwise developmentally challenged property and to direct solar energy systems away from forested areas, prime agricultural land, and properties with high intrinsic value under another use scenario. Now, I don't believe you should put solar anywhere. I'm not a big fan of, uh, a lot of solar, but that being said is, it still begs the question, what do you do with contaminated sites? And we know that, uh, at least some sites in this town, the DM would, uh, feel that it's contaminated. But anyways, I'm not in favor of this, and I just want it to be noted in the minutes, and I know I'll be elated on that, uh, that aspect, uh. But, uh, for the, for the record, Scott Billhurst is, uh, very concerned about us not addressing the contaminated sites in the town of Hopkins, and thank you.
This is Bob Marvel. I just want to comment on that. I, I think that, you know, we, we talked about this earlier. We, we're not saying that we're not going to address it. Uh, I think that to, in order to address it properly, we have to take the time to, to do a little bit of research and, and, um, you know, get the facts and, and talk to, uh, a number of people and decide how best to, to handle contaminated sites. I think that striking this right now doesn't mean that it's never gonna get into the ordinance later on. It just means that our first pass at this in order to, again, stop the, the inundation of, of, um, you know, solar projects, large solar projects, um, it, it allows us to get this ordinance done and finished, and then we can concentrate on, you know, other pieces of it and, and spend the time that, that we really should be spending uh, without having to, um, you know, to, to push back on, on large solar projects.
Yeah. I'd just like to respond and say that, uh, I'm against big solar in town. But sometimes, uh, if you get, uh, lemon, you gotta make lemonade, if you will. Uh, the, the thing of the, the, no matter how smart this town council is, we have people that know more than us in certain areas. And when the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, who's far more qualified than the five of us sitting here on this town council.
I agree.
Uh, that if they're allowed to make a judgment on something, they're certainly more qualified than Scott Billhurst and the four other people sitting on the council. Probably better qualified than anybody that sits on the planning board. Probably better qualified than anybody on the zoning board to review and some of these other boards. And that's, and I, and I'm not trying to take anything away from them. That is the state agency which is charged with addressing environmental needs of this uh, state. So that's all I'm gonna say. I mean, a, a lot of people, uh, talk about these things, but you're having a state agency as the way it's written, that's actually involved in, in, uh, dealing with protecting the environment of the state. That's all I'm gonna say. Thank you.
This is Bob Marvel. Again, one more comment?
Yes, go ahead, Bob.
Um, so this is a, a valid question because I don't know the answer to this, but I suspect I do. DM, Rhode Island DM, like probably most DMs in all the states are mostly reactionary instead of proaction. Uh, what I mean by that is, I don't think that DM is going out and looking at innovative, new ways to deal with contaminated sites. Uh, I think maybe they're just reacting to uh, contamination and contaminated sites that they already have and trying to figure out how to prevent, you know, prevent problems, uh, to like aquifers and things like that. So I think that's where, you know, we, um, can do our due diligence and, you know, use the EM, certainly use their expertise, but their expertise is kind of focused on one thing, and I think that we should be getting expertise from other areas that look at contaminated sites and say, what are our options? What can we do? What, what kind of innovative things can, can we do to, uh, to make use of that land? And I think that is, you know, the best way to do it. That, that's, that's my thought.
Council Marvel, do you have a comment? I mean, I'm sorry, Council Gary.
Council Gary, thank you.
Look at like seven pieces on the computer screen.
Thank you, President Moffett. Uh, I concur with, uh, uh, Council Marvel. You know, DM isn't the, you know, is, is, you know, the state agency, I agree, but there are other entities that are out there that I know of in my world that, that, uh, do a lot of writing and look into contaminated sites. And I'm, all, all I'm saying is just DM is not, DM is state, but there are other agencies out there that do a lot with contaminated sites, development programs, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, um, Gary. So 5.3.10, a precedence of approval, um, as, in relation to this, um, this ordinance, where does it, does it fit?
So, um, you know, you could strike five point three point ten. Um, the only reason I, I didn't, um, say, you know, you could strike it right off the bat was because I know this was an issue the last time around, and the, what I'm thinking of here is that, you know, if you have an applicant come in and they propose, um, a, a project that includes solar and requires planning board approval as a development project, then, you know, even though this ordinance doesn't currently allow it, they could all, they could, as anybody could, request, uh, a, a council amendment to the ordinance to allow it. And this may be at a point when, you know, there's a new council with a new philosophy towards solar. Um, and if that's the case, um, you know, including this in the ordinance would clarify that, um, or, or settle the debate that came up the last time around, uh, with the prior council, that if someone comes in and does that, and they require to get planning board of approval for their project, that that's the first stage, and they need to get, both a recommendation on it from the planning board, but also a, um, a, uh, uh, approval of their first, their first approval stage from the planning board before they move on to, um, you know, to go somewhere else to get relief. So, again, it's less relevant now, um, because you're not, this ordinance doesn't contemplate anybody building that type of project with solar, um, but, but you might want to consider having it in there still in case some developer comes in and wants to ask for an amendment to the ordinance to allow that type of project. Um, and, um, there's a different council or a different, uh, sentiment at that time in the town about solar. So that's the only reason I didn't say, you know, strike it off the bat, I just wanted to put it out there for your consideration.
Thank you. Sharon, can I just make, I, I want to say one thing, um, and then I will allow you to speak. Um, I, I, I like your, um, your stance on that, Attorney Squares, I think, um, you know, keeping it in there does allow, you know, now if someone, you know, wanted to submit an amendment, you know, to, to change some of the things in, in the ordinance, um, that, that this is already in here, it will not require us to, to have an amendment to, to add it to it, to, to counter that. So, um, I am in favor of leaving it in there, just, um, it, but also having the full definition of, um, of precedence approval, the, the whole statute to, to accompany the wording that, that's here now. Um, Sharon, go ahead.
I disagree with this precedence of approval. Um, I still would prefer, uh, the state statute forty-five twenty-four fifty-one, that's the way the town council acted in the past, and it's according to the zoning ordinance. And I will read the first part of it, it says, "The city or town shall designate the officer or agency to receive a proposal for adoption, amendment or repeal of a zoning ordinance or zoning map. Immediately upon receipt of the proposal, the officer or agency shall refer the proposal to the city or town council and to the planning board or commission of the city or town for study and recommendation. The planning board or commission shall in turn notify and seek the advice of the town planning department, if any, and report to the city or town council within forty-five days after receipt of the proposal, giving its findings and recommendations as prescribed in forty-five twenty-four fifty-two." And so that's the way the town council has been acting in the past, and that's the way I prefer to continue. It is a state statute under zoning, and I think that we've been doing the right thing. And I, and if you're going to put anything in here, you need to put that in there, thank you.
This, too, is also a state statute, I think, um, I, I, again, um, you know, things that were done in, in the past, um, I know, uh, you know, based on, you know, I, I've obviously the recommendation of Attorney Squares, um, I know, um.
Steve?
Yes.
I have conc- I have discussed this with, uh, Steve Seipole, our new town, town solicitor, and he says that the, that there is no, um, definitive answer out there in the court yet. So it could, it could be under this zoning ordinance, or it could be under the planning, there is no, there's not, it's not definite.
Okay, so I would, um, and, and my opinion is, is that, uh, you know, moving forward, I would like to, I would like to see this precedence of approval, that's, that's, that, that, that's the pathway for me for, that I'm going to choose for, you know, to, to stand on, uh, moving forward, I mean, that's kind of, you know.
Well, I'd like to know what the other councillors feel, too. I'm just giving you my opinion.
Thank you Sharon.
Hey Sharon, Council Gary here, uh, is it possible, maybe we can get a copy of the, the, uh,
Zoning ordinance, yes.
Yeah, it's the one you wrote off, and you can put it into this week's packet, so we could all look at it.
Yep.
Yeah, sounds good, thank you. Scott, do you have any comments?
No, I just, uh, think that it's very important to consider, uh, laws and precedent laws in, you know, the making a judgment based on history and what we've done in the past, and also, I appreciate Counselor Davis stating law, you know, uh, uh, and I think the council has to be very careful, as well as any board, to think that they know the, all the, all, the, they know all the answers, or they're more concerned than another agency or another board, who might have far more experience or expertise than we do as a body. Uh, everybody can have an opinion of where we want to go, but, uh, we've got to, uh, really weigh other points of view. We also have to take in consideration what the state will expect, and also, uh, anything that we adopt could be taken to court, I'm not saying it will be, and could be, uh, possibly thrown out, it's too restrictive. I'm just putting that out, it, it might not be, but, uh, if you have laws on the books, also ordinances in the town, we have to be very careful. That's, that's just a thought, and I'm sitting here trying to listen. I guess I, I'm the male content on the council, because I'm, uh, but, uh, I'm, I'm willing to listen, but I do know Counselor Davis's remark on citing the state law, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Could I just, uh, make a comment that, that this precedence of approval issue is, uh, something that is the subject of, um, uh, lawsuit in the Superior Court? And, uh, we, you know, we might get a clear answer as to what the correct uh, method of doing things is, uh, from the court, and, uh, but this is an issue that the Supreme Court, like, hasn't made a, a decision about, um, whether, you know, one way or the other is correct or incorrect or legal or illegal, it's, it's, it, it, you know, there's, there's, uh, the Zoning Enabling Act and the Subdivision Enabling Act, and they have, uh, the Subdivision Enabling Act has this precedence of approval statute, and the Zoning Enabling Act has statutes on the procedure for amending the ordinance, and they don't refer to one another. And, uh, I, I would, uh, I don't know if I have any advice on how that relates to the ordinance today, or, but we should keep that in mind, that, that this is, uh, something that the courts very well could give us an answer to at some point.
Do you have any, uh, Counselor Hurst, do you have any, uh, idea when that decision will be made? And how long it's been in the pipeline for a decision?
I, I don't want to speculate about when or if a decision might come out tonight during this meeting.
Thank you. Um, do we have any, um, so, all right, um, five point three point eleven, inspection and enforcement. Having, having read it, does anybody have any objection or anything? Um, I, I, I can read it if, if everyone, yes Sharon?
The only thing I would have added, and, and, and maybe Jim Lanfear can, can quote, or, or comment on it, I think I would have added, planning department personnel after engineering consultant and planning department personnel, and I don't know if they really do want to be involved in this, but they have to help.
Jim Lanfear, town planner, I'll, I'll weigh in on that, I, I think the way it's worded is fine, um, the building and zoning official has enforcement powers, uh, greater than the planning department, and we have a town engineering consultant that serves both departments, and so I, I, I think they're, I think they're capable of inspecting and, and enforcing.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent, all right, so with no objection, uh, we'll move on to, um, section ten, special use permits.
So, uh, Council President, I, I could jump in, that there is one revision that I would need in this, that I would, that I didn't make that I should have made, because it refers to major and minor solar energy systems, which, um, which is no longer applicable. But striking that language, the intent of this provision is just to say, if you go to the zoning board for, uh, a special use permit on a, on solar, which, in, in this case, it would be applicable because you can go under the, what we're discussing, if you go for a, um, ground mounted accessory in a resident, residential ground mounted accessory. Um, this would just say that the dimensional requirements that apply, um, you have to stick to. You, you can't ask for the special use permit, and at the same time, ask for relief on the dimensional requirements and say, you know, bring the structure, to bring the panels closer to your neighbor's yard, or make them higher than the, um, than allows by the, than is a lot, than is a lot by the ordinance. And say, if you're going for the special use permit for the, in this case, it would be the ground mounted accessory, you have to stick to the, to the dimensional requirements, and you, you can't exceed them.
Good, thank you for the clarification, um, i- is there any, any objection to that?
No, good.
A comment, Sharon, did you have a comment?
I just said I'm good, that was exactly the one point that I would have questioned, and so we're good.
Excellent, all right, thank you. All right, um, first I'm going to ask, uh, any, uh, and, and any councillors if they have any, um, any comments or concerns or anything, before I open up to allow the public to respond or ask questions. Okay, with, with nobody saying anything, um, I'm going to call your name in the order in which your hand was raised. Phone number five nine five one seven zero one, you have the floor, please state your name and address, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Steve, um, this is Sherri Aronin, Die Hill Road, um, with some of the recent, um, discussion that's just come up, can I ask to be deferred? I'm in the process of reading a couple of things, and I would just like to, um, gather my thoughts a little bit before I speak, so could you pass on me and then come back to me, if that's okay?
Yes, we can. Okay, uh, next up, phone number two three zero nine five nine three, you have the floor, please state your name and address.
Hi, Carolyn Light, forty-three Forest Glen Drive. Uh, I wanted to speak to the limits on the residential solar opportunities, uh, that are included in this ordinance. Um, I have a commute every day where I drive through a postage stamp community, and I pass a house that has roof mounted solar and ground mounted solar, and they're off the grid. I applaud that effort on their part, I don't see myself doing it, but the reason why I'm bringing this up is that I think in this proposed ordinance, uh, one of the opportunities that I see existing in this neighborhood in Connecticut is eliminated, and that is simply refers back to something that Barbara Capalbo had interest in us looking at in her term. Um, I have, uh, this particular house, this residence in this postage stamp neighborhood where the houses are close together, they installed an automobile electronic charging station. And I don't see that happening in Hopkinton, according to what you guys are proposing. And I strongly feel if an individual that is paying taxes to our community wants to be off the grid by doing something that sensible, they should be allowed to do it. And, uh, you need to take future development and technology opportunities into consideration while you're framing this. Um, you know, maybe that house is one in a million, but that is a great opportunity for a family to live comfortably and live it according to what their principles and motivations are. In this ordinance, you're pulling that out of the neighborhoods, you're taking it away from Hopkinton by limiting it. That's all, uh, that's all I have to say, it's a consideration I would like you guys to be aware of, and, uh, you know, this, what, what you're proposing today is something that is going to yield results many years down the road. It's not just about what happened yesterday. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, next up, Carol DeRozers.
Hi, Carol DeRozers, Pleasantview Drive, I have a question on where we stand with farms, because we've kind of, um, eliminated it from the, them, from this discussion, but I'd like to make sure we do address, some of the questions around farms and what constitutes, uh, who can be included under farm viability? And I guess I'm specifically referring to, you know, not allowing all forestry, um, parcels to be included, that we really, um, tighten up what falls under farm viability in terms of, you know, has to be assessed as a farm, have a farm tax number, that they adhere, adhere to approved agriculture activities from the Rhode Island General Law, um, that perhaps the town should validate farm income by having IRS Form forty-five oh-six-T submitted to the town, um, that type of thing. You know, I'm ju- I'm just worried because there are so many parcels that are forestry, and what that could be, and, and, you know, I want to support farms, but, um, seeing how, uh, some of the forestry parcels are inching their way in concerns me.
Council Gary, did you want to comment?
No, hi Carol, uh, Council Gary here, there is in Hopkinton, I, I think we've had this conversation before, Hopkinton is eighteen, one thousand eight hundred fifty-two acres of farm that's designated through the town. There's another forty-three hundred acres of forestry, okay, or woodlands if you would. We've, I think we've pretty much nailed this one down, what, what constitutes as a farm, as far as paperwork you have to submit, town hall every year goes out to the state, you have to make X amount. But I think the town council shouldn't be in the business of asking people for their IRS information. If you fall crying to the criteria, and your, and DM for Rhode Island, State Rhode Island comes out, it says, yep, you're a farm, and you follow all the paperwork for it, you're a farmer.
Right, but.
I do understand what you're saying about some of the questions about forestry and stuff like that to the Farm Act.
Yeah. It's very easy to download an IRS form and submit it, I mean, I think we need to make sure they're authenticated, and, um, you know, I, I just don't feel forestry is the same as farming. And, you know, we have one of those applications in with the, uh, planning board now, and it doesn't feel good.
All right, thank you Carol.
Eric, Eric, you have the floor, I'll state your name, please.
Eric Bibler, Woodville Road, um, I just have a couple of comments, um, the first comment is, I really feel that I need to state for the record, you know, I'm one- you know, I'm one of the plaintiffs in the appeals of solar projects at Skunk Hill and Atlantic Solar on Main Street. And one of the issues is the fact that, I mean, it's just a matter of record, the town of Hopkinton did not follow the precedence of approval statute for the past 11 projects in a row consecutively. But my concern is, first of all, I just want to note that whatever's happening with the litigation about what happened previously, you know, this ordinance is forward looking. And I think that Mr. Squares had originally proposed to put it in there to settle, you know, any controversy about it. And I was going to say that my concern would be that if you didn't stipulate that the town, there is, by the way, the town has an ordinance that requires it to follow the precedence of approvals because the State General Assembly has mandated that every town include it in the ordinance. So we do have this precise language almost in our town ordinances and it is a state statute which trumps a town ordinance. We just haven't followed it. So I would like to, there are a lot of reasons which perhaps we don't want to go into right now, but I think there are a lot of reasons to recommend that we do follow the law, starting with the fact that it is the law. And my concern is there is a tendency in the town of Hopkinton, from what I've observed, for, to look at a new proposal and say, well, how did we do it last time? Or that's the way we've always done it. So if we have failed to follow the law on all these previous occasions, I would like to get out of this situation where an applicant comes in and, you know, a new town planner, let's say it's not, you know, Jim Lamphier and a new planning board and a new town council, looks back at our history and says, well, we did it wrong, but that's the way we've always done it. So let's do that. And then the last thing I want to say about that point is I'm very confused by Sharon's statement, Councilor's statement, that she has consulted with the town solicitor and that the town solicitor believes now that we can either reverse this language or maybe that it's not settled. On January 11th, at approximately the 1:42 mark on the video, Solicitor Seiple, Planning Solicitor Margaret Hogan, and Attorney Squares all agreed that this was a state statute that the town was required to follow. So I don't know whether that legal opinion from our own solicitor has changed, but I would certainly favor striking it rather than cementing something that our own solicitor said was blatantly wrong just a couple of weeks ago. And as a matter of litigation, it's better to leave it unsettled than it is to charge out there and, you know, put something that's exactly the contrary of what our legal opinion was from our own town solicitors a couple of weeks ago. And I don't, I mean, I'm not the client, you know, of the town solicitor. I think maybe Mr. Squares might want to comment because, you know, this whole idea of inserting that was to settle the controversy and make sure that the town understood that the state statute needed to be followed and put it right in the ordinance. And I thought we kind of all agreed to that, you know, a couple of weeks ago when we got these opinions from our own solicitors. But look, I'm not, the town solicitor doesn't work for me. You know, I can't ask them for an opinion, but I would appreciate if someone on the council would ask that this be reconciled. I'd like to hear from Mr. Squares on that.
Council President, if I could just address it. So, you know, in our firm, we represent a number of municipalities in Rhode Island. And, you know, what I would be advising them anytime litigation is brought up before the council is that, you know, you shouldn't comment on the litigation. And I'm not trying to bait the council into discussing litigation by including this provision. But I think the way to look at it, you know, I've given my opinion to the council before about precedence of approvals, but the way to look at it in the ordinance is that it's not intended to settle the dispute in the litigation. It's just intended to incorporate a practice. You know, it's not intended to settle what's the legal way and what's not. That's what a court will do. It's intended to just incorporate the practice. And part of the reason is I think it's a better practice because, you know, if a developer comes in and they want to propose a project, the board that, the board that has the expertise in examining a project, a particular project, is the planning board. They look at the details and minutia of a particular project. Whereas the council, they kind of, they're better suited in my mind to look at the overall scheme, set the plan for the town. They give the planning board their marching orders and then the planning board looks at each project. So if a particular developer comes in and they have a land development project that they want to propose, putting aside the legal argument, because I don't think, I don't think this, you could, you know, obviously there's pending litigation and all that. But putting that aside, I think just incorporating that practice going forward as a choice of ordinance language. It would set up that, you know, down the road, if you have a new council, you have, you know, passage of time and a project comes in and the question is, well, what procedure should we follow? Should we have the council look at it first and kind of take each parcel on its own and, you know, treat each parcel as the council individually deciding whether or not solar should go there? Or should we go to the planning board first and let the planning board make that initial decision? I think it's better to have the planning board to make that initial decision, in my opinion, even putting aside the legal argument. So that's why putting it into the ordinance wasn't intended to prejudice you in the litigation or be it admission of the point necessarily in the litigation. But just saying prospectively, we think this is a better practice and that's why I propose it. So that's all I would say about that.
Steve?
Yes, go ahead, Sharon.
Okay. When I had the conversation or when we had that discussion the last time, neither...
Councilwoman, I would suggest that we don't have any discussion about anything that you and I may have talked about.
Okay, fine.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Sorry to interrupt.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Councilor Hurst, I would respectfully request that we have an executive session with lawyers to brief us on any current litigation involving the town, either on land use issues or any other issue. We do have a new legal team representing the town. They might have a different perspective than our previous legal council. And I think it's very important that we get a feel on their view professionally on these legal issues. So I'm asking you as a member of the town council to schedule that. Probably you can't schedule it for the next council meeting, but sometime in February. So we can be briefed by our legal team what their views are in current litigation and the legal issues dealing with some of these things in executive session. And I'm sure that the cause in the, can be cited to do that because we want to protect the town legally. Not all lawyers agree, not all judges agree. But I'd like to hear the perspective from a legal perspective, from a new legal team on current litigation as well as any of these land use things. I'm sure we can find a citation to do that. So I, as a member of the town council, ask you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I will, I will work on that. I will, I will try to schedule something and see what we can get set up.
Maybe we could do it prior to our next workshop.
Yeah, we could do something like that. I will get with Lisa and...
If the attorneys are...
Yeah, right. No, I mean, it's a scheduling thing. And then I'll, as I do, I will hash out the schedule with Lisa and any parties that would be part of this executive session. Eric, did you have more?
Just a second. Am I still muted or not?
No, you're not muted.
Okay. Well, this is a, this is a minor point, but we kind of blew past it. You know, you had a long discussion about the, you know, the 400 square feet versus the usage for an accessory. And I just wanted to offer that I think those metrics are different. I think it seems like, well, first of all, national grid allows you to generate a credit, right? So you're not going to be able to claim credits that are in excess of your consumption. And they don't want you to build anything that's twice as big as it needs to be because it would destabilize the grid anyway. So that's one metric. But I think when President Moffett was proposing a square footage test, I think what he was, I think the way I understood it, the rationale was the definition of an accessory use is that it should not exceed the consumption and it should not exceed 400 square feet. And the idea there was, you know, the lesser of. But the reason I think that that has some merit, even if, you know, it only takes about 20 panels probably to, you know, run, to produce enough electricity for a typical household. But the reason why I think some number, whatever you choose, 400 or 500, just put it in there, make it lesser of, that's a different metric that has nothing to do with consumption. In other words, you're not trying to say we want every single house, you know, no matter how large, you know, to generate 100% of, you know, consumption if it's a 10,000 square foot house, right? I think the idea was if we're going to put them in RFR 80, you know, we'll allow it up to a point, but we want to put a limit on it because we don't want these monstrous, you know, installations on a huge house. So I just wanted to make that point that I think these two things are trying to accomplish, you know, trying to go at the problem from different ways. And I don't think it's onerous for a homeowner to be limited to whatever it is, 400 or 500 square feet and reduces electric bill by only 90%, you know, or only 80% or whatever the metric is. You know, I don't find that to be, you know, terribly unfair. But I just wanted to make that point that I think you can pick an arbitrary number that you're comfortable with that relates to the footprint that doesn't really have anything to do with the consumption. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Sheri, are you ready, Sheri?
Yes, Steve, thank you. Thank you for the extra time.
Sure.
Okay, Sheri Aronian, Die Hill Road. I have two separate topics that I wanted to talk about. First will be President Moffett's proposal on the ground mounted. I just have a couple of questions that I have here. Let's see, hold on. I like the maximum footprints. I think the spirit of it, if I understand it right, is to not have, you know, any kind of exorbitant, ground mounted in an RFR 80. I'm curious, are you only doing RFR 80 or are you thinking of R1 as well?
My proposal is for RFR 80 only.
Okay, RFR 80 only, resident, it's okay, RFR 80 only, not R1. Are you planning on setbacks that are the same as the current building zoning setbacks now for, let's say, a shed, which I think are 40 feet from side setbacks and 50 front and rear? Or are you thinking of expanding those?
I'm proposing 100-foot setbacks, side and rear.
Oh, okay. I must have missed that, I apologize.
Yeah, and then obviously no, nothing located in a, in a front yard of a property.
Okay, so you're doing 100-foot setbacks?
Correct.
Okay, great. And just something I thought of that you might want to add, building permit fees on this. There's probably not a building permit fee for such a thing because I don't think it's currently a use. So I thought that may be a fee that the council may want to discuss. Just like, you know, there's fees to, you know, add a shed, add a deck, whatever. So that's something I wanted to suggest on that. Let's see. Also on this topic, I've seen, and I don't know if, yeah.
Sheri, not to interrupt you, Councilor Geary here.
Sure, sure.
I think what you're saying, I think there is an application fee or something like that. I'm not sure. Jim, are you on? Could you answer that for me? I'm sure that probably there's going to be some kind of application fee prior to putting that on.
Yes, Jim Lamphier Town Planner. I'm pretty sure that the Building and Zoning Department would have to issue an electrical permit and maybe even a building permit for that type of an installation. So they'll have to go through the Building and Zoning Department to do it.
I think so. There you go, Sheri, there's a little more clarity.
Okay, so also, so this isn't a project, so to speak, that's going to go through development plan review through the planning board. It's going to be just like roof mounted where they get their permits and they get, and they pay their fees and then they just do it. Is that correct?
No, no, it's...
No, okay, I might have missed something.
...which would go to the zoning board.
Okay, okay. Apologize for not picking up on that. The only other thing I had on this topic is, you know, I have seen an array in nearby Connecticut that powers a business that is actually only about two feet high. So I'm just wondering if you would consider changing your height requirement from six feet to four. This two-foot array, which is a ground mounted array that feeds a business, I spoke to the business owner and I'm sure, you know, I don't want to, you know, give all the particulars that we talked about, you know, here on a public call. But it was very interesting. And because it's only two feet high, that's something that could be hidden very easily with even, you know, a picket fence, a stockade fence. It would almost look like a garden, so to speak. It's actually a very unusual array. I'd never seen it. And basically it, it powers almost his entire business. It doesn't do the whole thing, but it does almost, you know, in his entire electric bill. But it's, you know, if you wanted, you know, more information on that, I'd be happy to give it to you. But I just thought it was interesting. I don't know if, you know, Councilor Geary, you know, in the farm environment, if you had ever seen anything so low, because this is actually an agricultural business that I saw it at, you know, where it's so low at two feet. So it's just a suggestion, you know, if you would think, if you would consider, you know, lowering your height from six to four. So that's it on that topic. The next topic I just wanted to speak to was Sharon had kind of mentioned something about Chapter 45, 2451, which I did go ahead and read. But I also wanted to know, and this is kind of a question I'd like to respectfully ask through the president, you know, to the attorneys on the line if they could possibly, you know, answer this. I'm not looking, I understand that there's litigation in the background, but if we're going to put any kind of language in this ordinance going forward, is it a good idea to use 452444, which is creation of vested rights? You know, I think, let me back up a minute. Let me back up, I shouldn't have said that one first. Let's talk about development plan review just for a minute through the solicitors if we could. Development plan review is the definition, does state that it's for permitted uses by right. That is correct, I believe. I just want to make sure if I'm on the right track here. But when I read it, it says, "Applications for uses that are permitted by right under the zoning ordinance." So if we put anything in under development plan review, it would have to be a by right use. Is that correct?
Well, I could, I could jump in if you don't mind, Council President. And right now, there are, there was some development plan review in the previous iteration of this ordinance, but there isn't anymore. Development plan review is a little bit different than land development review. And that development plan review, when it's for a by right use, that can go to the planning board and the planning board basically does have the ability to approve or deny. And it's less intensive review than land development review. But if you have a use that's not by right, but either requires a special use permit or requires a zone change or something along those lines from the council, in that case, the development plan review is actually just advisory. So that's a distinction between land development review and development plan review.
So Attorney Squares, when you say land development review, is that also synonymous with major land development, the terminology?
So there's two, there's actually two types of land development review. One's major land development and the other one is interland development. But they fall under the umbrella.
Okay, so they fall under the same umbrella. I hadn't heard the term that you had used. I had always seen major and minor, but they... I had always seen major and minor, but they are one in the same. And, and you know, I guess if there's ends across, you know, the, the usage and the district using table, it, it might be a moot point. But I guess if any language is going to be added in there, as I know there's been some discussion tonight, it, you know, I would think it would be a good idea to tighten that up so that anything, anything in the future, like, you know, Attorney Squares said earlier, any council that has a different appetite for this type of thing, you know, there's already something in there. You know, and the other thing I had always, I, I had asked this at the prior council, different solicitors, different council. You know, when you read the land and subdivision regulations, and I think this is where a lot of people have gotten confused over the last few years, and it talks about, you know, the planning board advisory opinion, and then a master plan approval, and then council. You know, I had asked this, and I, and they didn't really answer it. But I often wondered if that planning board advisory, if it was a po, excuse me, if it was a positive advisory, which, you know, it hasn't really been. I don't think there's been any positive advisories. But if it had been a positive advisory, the council, I think, is there in place to either affirm that positive advisory or to deny it if they don't feel that the planning board, you know, if they don't agree with the planning board, I should say. So anyway, I think that's where a lot of the, the confusion, you know, with a lot of people has, have come in. I know, you know, it's, it's been confusing for me. And I guess that's about it. I think Attorney Squares answered my question on that. So I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Sherry. Thank you, Sherry.
Mr. Council President, if I could make a suggestion just for the purpose of submitting a draft, it sounds like, I, I have a direction from the council on everything except for that last piece on the precedence of approval section. And it sounds like that there's going to be a executive session scheduled. So I would suggest that at this point, I'll, I'll submit a draft with all the changes we discussed, except I'll leave that section alone. You can have your executive session, and then we can come back to the public hearing. And however you decide to, to keep or revise or delete, you could address it at that point, that that might be the quickest and easiest way to get us over the hump and get to the public hearing because it seems like everything else is kind of just about there.
If I could briefly, the, I, I, I don't know if this precedence of approval issue is something that needs to hold up getting, getting the ordinance done that the council wants because regardless of what goes into this ordinance, it's still the state law that controls, and we're still dealing with state statutes that the town cannot change. So, so regardless of, of what goes into this ordinance, it's, it's the state law that will control, and it's, and it's what the court decides those statutes mean that will control. I just don't want anyone to think that this, that, you know, there's an, an executive session would be necessary before rendering a decision on the ordinance. I don't know that those, those issues are necessarily related.
Yes, go ahead, Scott.
Councilman Hurst, I think any, any client should be able to talk to a legal counsel anytime or any issue. And if you followed what I said earlier, I believe in an executive session because we've changed our legal team. They might have a different legal perspective than their predecessors. We do have ongoing litigation and some legal concerns that our solicitor might want to point out to us that could possibly result in litigation. So I think we, it's incumbent upon this council to get a feel from our new legal team on certain legal issues, certain litigation and other things. And they think that something from the present, present proposal ordinance is relevant to executive session, let's do it. I mean, we have to protect the town legally, and I'm sure the council president will talk to the lawyer to phrase that executive session as well as the town clerk to fulfill the requirements of the, of an executive session. But we should have one. Thank you.
Councilman, I don't, I don't disagree that it's appropriate for the, for the council to have an executive session with the attorneys to discuss the litigation. I just, I, I, you know, and it's, it's, it's not my decision, it's the council's, but I, I don't necessarily think it's, it's something that needs to hold up getting the, the ordinance done. That, that was all I was trying to, to say.
Understood. And with that said, Scott, I mean, I, we, I, I will work with the attorneys and, and Lisa to, to get a, an executive session on the schedule so that way we have the, the ability to, to ask the questions we feel like we need to ask. Okay, so, so with that said, Attorney Squares, you're going to provide that, that draft for us?
Yeah, and I, I think I'll, I'll be able to circulate the draft and, for now, because I, I didn't hear any clear direction on that issue. I'm, I'm just going to punt on that one piece for now and, and not change anything on that with the understanding that, you know, as discussion comes back at the public hearing, you know, but then everything else, I, I have a, a draft, working draft, ready to send you.
Okay, thank you very much. Just one last, Eric, make it kind of brief, please. Thanks.
Okay, so I just really need to highlight this for your conversations whenever you have them in executive session or whatever. So with all due respect to our solicitor, you know, Mr. Sykle, he just said that it wasn't necessary really to insert this language because the town is obligated to follow the state statute anyway, right? But moments before that, maybe not even 10 minutes, we had Counselor Davis adamantly insisting that the town doesn't have to follow the state statute. And she proposed to insert language that would violate the stat, statute, and our town solicitor didn't have a problem with that. He didn't object to the idea of inserting language that would violate the state statute. So, look, we can't have it both ways. We can't assume that, that this town council or any future town council will follow the state statute when we have sitting counselors and a long history of violating that state statute, that believe you can, and we have a long history of doing it that way. So I, I really respectfully request that we look forward, not back, and I would respectfully request that our town solicitor think about whether he agrees with Mr. Squares or not, and think about what is the, you know, what is the best formulation to put in the ordinance on a forward-looking basis so that we don't have to debate this in court every time there's a project, okay? That, I mean, really, I, I'm very, very concerned because, you know, Counselor Davis is not an attorney, and she has a very strong opinion, you know? And, and the town solicitor has twice said now, once on January 11th, and just now, that this is a statute that must be followed, which completely contradicts Counselor Davis. So I don't think, I think our, I think our legal advisors should be protecting the town by making sure we're on the straight and narrow. I don't think we should put, be putting in whatever the counselor, council wants to do if it's illegal. That would be my request that you really settle this question. Thanks.
Steve?
Yes, go ahead, Sharon.
I am asking that a state statute under the zoning ordinance be used instead of a state statute under the planning level. I am substituting one state statute for another. I am not creating something new. And I, I resent having, being characterized as such. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilor Gary.
I think we, I think where we left that, where you had some, you had some issues in the wording. Counselor Davis brought up the, brought up the state stature. I think we all agreed where we left that was, we were going to go ahead and get a copy of this so we could all look at it. Then we could come back, and that, I think that's where we should leave it at.
I agree.
I, I also agree. I think obviously this is a conversation for us to have in, in an executive session so we can speak, speak freely about it. I think that's the best place for it, and I would, and I want to limit any discussion of that to that executive session moving forward. So with that being said, I think that's it, right? The next up is going to be the public hearing where Attorney Squares will present the proposed amendment to the ordinance.
Which date is that, Mr. President?
That is the sixth, the 16th of February.
Okay, because we have town council meeting next Monday night, regular town council, not workshop. Okay.
Okay, so we will continue with the, with the progression of, of this, and we will, we'll see everybody back on the 16th of February for a public hearing. Does that sound good?
Is this going to be like the final project that, or is this a continuation of the workshop?
No.
It won't, no.
This is it.
Want to make sure I know what I'm talking about.
Okay. You got it. All right, with, with that, I, I would, I would like to adjourn this workshop and thank, thank everybody for their participation and, and their comments. It's a, it's a great thing to, you know, to see people have, have an opinion and they, and they want to voice it. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.